Good evening, everyone. It is now 6:00 PM on March the 7th, 2023. I'd like to welcome you all to the Richland County Council Regular Session. This meeting will now come to order. Madam Clerk, take the role, please.
Brenham?
Here.
Pew?
Here.
McBride?
Here.
Livingston?
Here.
Teresa? Weaver?
Here.
Baron?
Here.
Walker?
Here.
Mackey?
Here.
English?
President.
Newton?
Here.
Teresa?
Here.
We have a quorum.
Madam Clerk, before I proceed to the next item on the agenda, I would just like to recognize a special guest that we have here this evening at our county council meeting, and that is Commerce Secretary, Secretary Harry Lightsey. Good evening to you, Secretary Lightsey, and glad to have you with us this evening. Next item on the agenda is Item 2, which is the invocation that would be given by the Honorable Jessica Mackey. Madam Vice Chair, you recognize?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. If you would, just allow me to say a few words before I begin. So today is our first meeting in March, which celebrates Women's History Month, and wanted to take some time to recognize the women that I served with on Richland County Council. We have six women on county council, which is not heard of across South Carolina, and we are all serving together. And I want to take just a moment to call out their names and acknowledge each of them for their service. Cheryl English, Gretchen Baron, Yvonne McBride, Shaquise Newton, and Allison Teresa. Thank you for serving.
What's your name? Jessica Mackey.
Thank you. And so, wanted to say thank you and acknowledge that, but then also just a brief bit of history for Richland County Council. Acknowledge two other women that have served before us on county council. Ms. Candy Waits. She was the first woman to serve on Richland County Council, and we thank her for her service and for leading the way. The second is Ms. Bernice Scott. She was the first African-American woman to serve as chair on county council. And we also like to thank and acknowledge her this Women's History Month. So, Mr. Chair, thank you for that. Would like to... Ms. McBride, would you like to recognize?
You could go first.
Okay, thank you. And would like to take this time to have Ms. Cheryl English lead the invocation this evening.
You recognize...
Thank you.
Ms. McBride.
Mr. Chair, I would like to take this time to recognize Jeanette McBride, the Clerk of Court for Richland County, and the first black female to serve as Clerk of Court.
May we all bow together, please. Father, it's in your precious son's name that we come to you today, thanking you for your grace, your mercy, your love, thanking you for your glory, your splendor, Lord. We recognize your power and your deity. We understand, Lord, that we could not move or do anything without your power, so we are very gracious for all that you allow us to do. Father, as we come together to do the work of the county, we ask you to bind us, Lord, as one heart, one collective body, working for the good of all citizens in Richland County. Thank you, Lord, that we all serve, we all live, love, laugh, learn, and grow together here. So, Father, lead, God, and direct our hearts that we may continue working those things out that need to be worked out for your glory, Lord, but for the good of the county. God, we just ask you to continue to guide us, and we thank you for all you do. These and all blessings we ask and thanks we give in the precious name of our Lord and Savior, Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen. And for the pleasure of allegiance?
Thank you, Madam Vice Chair. And I think also in the audience this evening, we have, you know, the Chief Magistrate for Richland County, I believe, the Honorable Judge Sandra Sutton. Judge Sutton, if you're here, just raise your hand. Be acknowledged. Good to see you this evening, Judge. Next item on the agenda is Item 4, which is the presentation of proclamations. And I have been asked by our clerk to, I guess, wait until we completed all the, you know, presentation of proclamations along with the resolution before we congregate over there by the seal for photo ops this evening. So, Item 4A, which is a proclamation recognizing James Dale Truitt's retirement that would be given by the Honorable Yvonne McBride. Councilwoman McBride, you recognize?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. It is indeed my honor and pleasure to present this proclamation to Mr. James Truitt for his retirement of over forty years. That is a big accomplishment. And so, at this time, we will have the proclamation read. That's because I had, excuse me, Mr. Chair, I had my eyes dilated and didn't realize they wouldn't be back read at this time to see.
State of South Carolina, County of Richland. A proclamation. A proclamation recognizing James Dale Truitt's retirement. Whereas James Dale Truitt was also known as Jim, was born on December 13th, 1953, in Peru, Indiana. And whereas Mr. Truitt moved to South Carolina and began his career with the Richland County Sheriff's Department in family court for seven years, and subsequently, James worked as a court bailiff in the traffic court for another five years. Whereas Mr. Truitt's passion and dedication to the court system and law compelled him to do an additional twenty-eight years of service to the Richland County Clerk of Court as the court administrator. There, he developed valuable friendships with judges, attorneys, and others in the legal profession. Whereas Mr. Truitt is married to Leslie, and they have one daughter, Sarah, whom he loves very dearly. In his spare time, he enjoys being outside and working in his yard. Now therefore be it proclaimed that Richland County Councilmember Yvonne L. McBride recognizes Mr. James Dale Truitt on his retirement and thank him for his service to the justice and the peace of Richland County. Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is Item 4B, a proclamation recognizing Food Share South Carolina and declaring March as National Nutrition Month that would be given by the Honorable Yvonne McBride, the Honorable Paul Livingston, the Honorable Jason Branham, the Honorable Shaquise Newton, and the Honorable Cheryl English.
Would you please read the proclamation?
Yes, ma'am. A proclamation recognizing Food Share South Carolina and declaring March as National Nutrition Month. Whereas Food Share South Carolina aims to increase access to, knowledge of, and consumption of vegetables, fruit, throughout community-led projects. Whereas through its network of hubs across the state, Food Share seeks to improve the quality of life in diverse communities by increasing access to fresh, affordable produce and by providing quality cooking skills education. Whereas through its advocacy efforts in South Carolina, Food Share seeks to engage in dialogue with community leaders, including elected officials, to address their unique needs and concerns while building a coalition with like-minded organizations in the state and nationwide. Whereas food insecurity is defined as the lack of access to or lack of presence of food that makes up a complete diet. And food insecurity in South Carolina has risen since the pandemic, affecting more than sixty-five thousand Richland County residents, including over fourteen thousand children. Whereas Food Share has developed services to assist food insecure communities in twenty South Carolina counties, including Richland County. And whereas 2023 marks the fiftieth anniversary of the campaign originally launched as National Nutrition Week and expanded to National Nutrition Month as an effort to encourage people to make informed choices and develop healthy eating habits and physical activity habits. Now therefore be it proclaimed that Richland County Councilmembers Jason Branham, Yvonne McBride, Paul Livingston, Gretchen Baron, Overture Walker, Cheryl English, and Shaquise Newton recognize and honor Food Share South Carolina for its contributions to Richland County and throughout the state of South Carolina, and do hereby proclaim March 2023 as National Nutrition Month throughout the county. Richland County Council encourages all South Carolinians to dedicate themselves to healthy eating habits toward the goal of better living. Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is Item 5, a presentation of a resolution. This is Item 5A, a resolution recognizing T. Dwight Hannah's retirement that will require a vote, so at this time, I will entertain a motion.
Motion to approve. Second?
Properly second, any discussion? There'd be a none. Madam Clerk, take the vote, please.
Brenham?
Yes.
Pew?
Yes.
McBride?
It's definitely yes.
Livingston?
Yes.
Teresa?
Yes.
Weaver?
Yes.
Baron?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Mackey? English?
Yes.
Newton?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Want to read the resolution? Sorry, Madam Vice Chair.
Thank you. Whereas on July 27th, 1998, T. Dwight Hannah was hired by Richland County as Director of Human Resources and Title VI compliance. Mr. Hannah has led a team of twenty employees that assisted in planning, coordinating, and supervising the daily administrative and technical functions of the Human Resource Office, charge of directing all aspects of employment for Richland County's over two thousand employees. Whereas Mr. Hannah, a South Carolina native, born and raised in Johnsonville, receives his undergraduate degree from Voorhees College and his master's degree from Webster University. He is widely known as an advocate for all employees of Richland County and works with his dedicated team to provide support, assistance, and guidance to ensure that every employee has a resource for information and a voice to be heard at Richland County, such that every employee is capable of doing their best to serve Richland County citizens. And whereas Mr. Hannah is retiring on February 28th, 2023, after twenty-five years of service as a Director of Human Resources with Richland County, his leadership would carry on through the staff he led as they inherited a wealth of knowledge and skills to continue their work of effective and efficient services to the employees and citizens of Richland County. Now therefore be it resolved, the Council of Richland County Councilmembers Jason Branham, Derek Pew, Yvonne McBride, Paul Livingston, Allison Teresa, Don Weaver, Gretchen Baron, Overture Walker, Jessica Mackey, Cheryl English, and Shaquise Newton recognize and congratulate Director Hannah on his retirement and thank him for his longstanding commitment to serve in our community.
Madam Clerk, will you direct this?
Thank you, Chairman. Yes, if we can have the council, please meet us under the seal and have first Mr. James Dale Truitt and whoever is going to take the picture with him to please join us under the seal, and then afterwards Food Share, and then Mr. Hannah. Mr. Chair?
Director Hannah, I think it's twenty-seven years, right? Twenty-five. Well, after twenty-five years, you have certainly, you know, earned the right, more than earned the right to be recognized, so the floor is yours.
Well, first, thanks, thanks, and everything. Let me start by saying that. I think I did not plan to say anything. I thought I was just going to get the resolution. So I think I would like to thank the council, obviously. First of all, even though Mr. Walker's vote was in question for a moment, I'd like to thank him, I thank Mr. Brown, and certainly Ms. Thomas, and also Mr. Brown and Ms. Thomas for a very lovely reception on the 28th, and especially Ms. Thomas. Ms. Thomas told me she was going to get a caterer to do the work, but then I saw her doing the food, I saw her doing the tablecloth. She liked doing everything, so I certainly appreciate that very much. I brought a longtime friend of mine, he's like my brother, Randy Heady, to the reception. We've been friends for half a century, fifty, fifty years. We grew up together in Johnsonville. He's like a brother, an older brother, he's older than me. He is older, but he's a good guy. He's a retired Harvard lawyer, so he has a hard head and has a illustrious career in corporate law. And it was funny, he saw the reception and how nice it was. He said, "I didn't realize people were that glad to get rid of you." So, but that's what friends do. But look, with all seriousness, I would like to certainly say probably everything that you said about me in the proclamation really goes to my staff who did the work. You may have called me, you may have emailed me, but it was them who did the work. So they really deserve the credit. I was just the one maybe that you called or you emailed. So I would certainly like to thank them for supporting me for all these years. And in the closing, as the, I guess, the curtain falls on this act in my life, I would just like to say again, I think it was Sebastian in Shakespeare, The Twelfth Night, that said, "I can find no other thing to say other than thanks, thanks, and everything." So to all of you, thanks.
You recognize Mr. Pew?
All right. So, Mr. Hannah, I want to thank you for your twenty-five years of service. I only had three years to work with you, and I've never called down to HR and had a problem with getting anything that I needed. And I want to say thank you for your service to the county. Mr. Hannah is also a proud member of Omega Psi Phi, so that means a whole lot to me. And he is also from the PD area, so we are what we would call homeboys. So I just want to congratulate you on your service, sir. Thank you for everything.
Thank you.
Mr. Livingston?
Hannah, just sort of just personally, thank you. I had the pleasure of serving all twenty-five of those years with you. And I'm telling you, you've been a true Trojan horse. You know, I mean, there were tough times, rough times, but you got us through all of them in your role as our human resource person. So I just want to thank you, thank you, thank you, and I'm definitely going to miss you.
And let me just tell you this, my vote was never in doubt tonight. But I would just piggyback off of what Councilman Pew has said, as well as Mr. Livingston, although I haven't served as long as Mr. Livingston. But you were certainly grateful for your service, and you are the epitome of a public servant. So again, thank you and enjoy retirement, you deserve it. Next item on the agenda is Item 6. I'm sorry?
Mr. Chair.
You recognize Ms. English?
If we would, may I have a moment of privilege, please?
Yes, ma'am, you're recognized.
Thank you. I just want to share with everyone, if you see the t-shirt that I'm wearing today, this was the University of South Carolina Center for Developmental Resources. This was their annual assistive technology expo day, and they hold it every year. And for those of you who don't know, it's one in three people that are affected with a disability, whether it's, they're born with it, whether they're elderly or through accidents. And so, as Disability Month, Women's Month, and also Mental Health Month, I just would like for people just to take a moment to just remember those, the accessibility that goes with that, the struggles that they have, and just understand that when you're dealing with someone that has those needs, it could be from getting out of bed to wheelchairs, to rollators, whatever it is. There are a lot of people and a lot of families that struggle, and some of them struggle in silence. So this t-shirt, I worked all day at the conference, and so this represents what we do every day, or what I do every day. And I just wanted to say thank you to CDR and everyone in the disability community who works so hard and so diligently. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Ms. English. Next item on the agenda is Item 6, Approval of the Minutes. Specifically, Item 6A, Approval of the Minutes from the Special Call Meeting, February 14th, 2023. Any changes, additions, or deletions? You recognize Ms. Baron?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just want to just bring to the clerk's attention that as I was reading the minutes, it appeared that some details were left out of some of our discussions. And whereas I know that we are trying to make our minutes concise, I think that some of the dialogue that we have here from the dais is important to make sure that it's included for the record. And so I'll be glad to speak to you more in detail about what those items are, but I think it would just behoove us to make sure that we are fully transparent about the discussions that we're having and who's making those statements. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Baron. Changes or additions or deletions?
Move to approve.
All right, is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved to properly second, any discussion? There'd be a none. Madam Clerk, take the vote, please.
Brenham?
Yes.
Pew?
Yes.
McBride?
Yes.
Livingston?
Yes.
Teresa?
Yes.
Weaver?
Yes.
Baron?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Mackey?
Yes.
English?
Yes.
Newton?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Next item on the agenda is Item 6B, Approval of the Minutes from the zoning public hearing dated February 28th, 2023. Any changes, additions, or deletions? There'd be a none, I entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second, it's been moved to properly second, any discussion? There'd be a none, Madam Clerk, take the vote.
Brenham?
Yes.
Pew?
Yes.
McBride?
Yes.
Livingston?
Yes.
Teresa?
Yes.
Weaver?
Yes.
Baron?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Mackey?
Yes.
English?
Yes.
Newton?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Next item on the agenda is Item 7, Adoption of the Agenda. Any changes, additions, or deletions? Mr. Chair?
Fair for adoption.
Well, before you move, before your motion, though, Mr. Livingston believed Mr. Wright wanted to be heard, county attorney.
Yes, I would like to suggest one change, to add Project Connect receipt of legal advice pursuant to South Carolina Code 30-4-70, subsection 2 and subsection 5. Add that to executive session.
As a matter of fact, Mr. Chair.
All right, there's seconds, we moved to properly second. Any discussion? There'd be a none. Madam Clerk, take the vote.
Brenham?
Yes.
Pew?
Yes.
McBride?
Yes.
Livingston?
Yes.
Teresa?
Yes.
Weaver?
Yes.
Baron?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Mackey?
Yes.
English?
Yes.
Newton?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Hey, next item on the agenda is Item 8, Report of the Attorney for Executive Session Items pursuant to South Carolina Code 30-4-70. Mr. Wright, that item on Project Connect, well, I'll just reference it as Item 8A, okay? Does that item, Mr. Wright, involve outside counsel?
It does.
Okay. Well, at this time, entertain a motion to go into executive session.
Move to go into executive session?
Second. Moved to properly second, any discussion? There'd be a none. Madam Clerk, take the vote.
Brenham?
Yes.
Pew?
Yes.
McBride?
Yes.
Livingston?
Yes.
Teresa?
Yes.
Weaver?
Yes.
Baron?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Mackey?
Yes.
English?
Yes.
Newton?
Yes.
Motion approved.
All right, we're in executive session.
Yeah, I know, right?
Right. I entertain a motion.
Second.
And that motion is to come out of executive sessions, move to property second. Any discussion? There'd be a nun. Madam clerk, take the vote, please.
Brenham?
Yes.
You?
Yes.
McBride?
Yes.
Livingston?
Yes.
Croatia?
Yes.
Bieber?
Yes.
Darren?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Mackey?
Yes.
Newton?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Just for the record, we went into executive session regarding our item eight A, project connect that was pursuant to South Carolina code thirty dash four dash seventy A. That's a contractual matter. We received legal advice and no action was taken. Next item on the agenda is item nine, which is citizen's input. That's for items on the agenda not requiring a public hearing. Madam vice chair, anyone sign up to speak?
No, Mr. Chair, no individual signed up to speak this evening.
All right. Next item on the agenda is item ten, which is citizens input. Item ten A must pertain to Richland County matters not on the agenda. Items for which a public hearing is required or a public hearing has been scheduled cannot be addressed at this time. Madam vice chair, anyone sign up to speak?
No, Mr. Chair.
All right. Next item on the agenda is item eleven, the report of the county administrator. Mr. Brown, you recognize?
Mr. Chair, not to take things out of context, you had a citizen in the audience who communicated they did sign up to speak. So I don't know if you wanted to check with the clerk's office to see if there's something that we overlooked. Oh. You said she missed it. I'm sorry for interrupting, Mr. Chair.
She missed the.
She missed the sheet, so she was not able to sign.
Okay. Well. It's chair.
Did you get details on what information we'd like to sign up to speak for?
No, ma'am.
And.
If someone could perhaps just very briefly speak with her, find out what is it she would like to speak to? Mr. Chair, in the meantime, would you like me to go ahead and move forward with my report, sir?
Yes, go ahead.
So just a few quick items, members of council. One, I wanted to let you know that the item related to seventeen forty one Cushman, ideas center counter offer to the university. I heard back from them. We're waiting on additional response. I don't have an additional offer back from them at this point, but I did want to update you on that. Also, I've received a tentative ask related to a property on Greg Street related to probation and pardon parole, that building that the county owns. So I'm anticipating receiving some sort of offer. And so I just kind of want to bring that forward to you that I have been reached out to. I don't have any details, but I understand that someone may be interested in acquiring that property from the county. That's the facility right behind us on Greg Street where probation and pardon and parole used to be housed. Additionally, I did receive a couple of emails I just kind of want to bring to your attention related to our H tax and A tax process. We did have a couple of individuals who, for whatever reasons, missed the application deadline. Did speak with the county attorney and I understand that that process that we have in place is dependent on them kind of meeting those deadlines. What I would just say to the council, please keep in mind that you have the ability during the budget process, if you wanted to address organizations related to A tax and H tax outside of the committee process, if someone missed that, if you still wanted to do that, there's another way you could do that. Other than that, it would require the council taking an action, making a determination, you know, why you would reopen applications and making that available then for, you know, all parties to potentially participate in. Otherwise, you would just need to take some other form of council action during the regular budget process. So those are the three particular updates that I wanted to provide for you. The rest of the time, Mr. Chair, I'll take any questions in just a second. The rest of the time, I want to just take a few moments and kind of move forward with one of our strategic initiatives, which is our modernization of technology and how that implements or how that affects our work. So we've implemented this year ClearGov, which is one of our tools that we're using during the budget. ClearGov is going to allow not only you as members of county council departments, but also citizens to have a better clear picture of how we do our budgeting. And so just for a few minutes, what I wanted to do, Mr. Chair, is I want the budget director just to kind of show you what our departments have gone through, what we're using to kind of pare down the budget and just give you an idea of what that looks like. We're not going to go into details. This is not a budget work session, but I want you to see what the movement of our strategic plan looks like as it relates to modernizing technology and how it directly impacts how we're doing our business today compared to what we were doing just last budget cycle. So I'll be if you could show them what that looks like and I think we're going to show you some numbers, but what I would like to say is we'll show you the overall numbers. The request came in from department starting at thirteen million dollars worth of request. So yes, ma'am, I see your eyes. Yes. So yes, we get to, as the administrator, get all that information coming in and getting to go through their process and then bringing it to you in the form of a recommended budget. But just wanted to give you an idea of the level of decision that had to be made even before they get to county council related to request. Mr. Despande?
Good afternoon, Mr. Chair and the council members. I'll be Despande for the record. So as Mr. Brown mentioned, that we procure ClearGov, which is basically the budget cycle management software back in fall of twenty twenty two, and it has different modules. So we have the operational budget request module as well as we have the digital budget book, so which we are using for producing our annual budget book as well. It has the capital budget module as well as the personnel budgeting. So right now, the way that we did the operational budgeting, what you have in front of your screen is these are different kinds of funds and departments that we're collecting the budget requests from them using this software. So for example, for the FY twenty four general fund budget request. So one kind of quick note here, the numbers are all, everything work in progress. So please don't hold those numbers to any kind of conclusion here. But for example, what you have in front of you is like basically revenue versus expenditure. So as so far, as per the what departments have submitted their operational budget request and as well as based on their personal budget request from the last year, you can see that, you know, we are in deficit of eleven million dollars compared to revenue. Again, for note, like the revenue numbers are not updated in the software yet, but this is kind of an example that will give us a very broad overview, like thirty thousand feet overview about our budget while we are working on. As well as you can see that now in expenditure, like these are like different four groups of our, all the departments that are categorized in as per the our annual financial reporting requirements. So in the general government, for example, another thing is like one. You can see here in front of you is like basically FY twenty three by FY twenty three actuals or FY twenty three budgeted column is not here yet, but FY twenty, FY twenty four requested, which is that basically the, that's a summary of all the departments that they have submitted so far, their budget request. As an example, you can see altogether around, we have around four million dollars increase compared to the last year budget so far what they submitted. We haven't made any, any kind of budget recommendations yet. No rejection or acceptance about their budget request, but so far around altogether around four million extra than what they have budgeted so far in their FY twenty three. I will just give you a quick example about a particular, just one example of any one department. So I will, I will pick like maybe. So let's like Board of Elections and Vote Registration. So as you can see on the operating side, this number, which is the five hundred and forty four thousand. So basically they are requesting five hundred and forty four thousand more in operating requests compared to their last year budget. If we drill down those numbers, where exactly you can see that they are requesting around four hundred and fifty two thousand more in the temporary employment agency, ninety two thousand more in the software, our program maintenance and licenses. So this is kind of, you know, the line item detail that we get. We have been meeting since last week all the departments, department heads along with Mr. Brown and administration team. And we go basically on this, all the details about the request here. Also, you can see they can attach their, any kind of supporting documentation about their particular request. So so far, like for example, this program mentor, they submitted one on a, I think it's a PDF document about their vendor code about that particular license. So in that case, we, we, we have the, all the supporting documents that also provided to us electronically instead of any kind of paper based documentation here. So other than that, I will give you another example about just annual budget book that we are using this software. This is our, right now is almost finalized, but just like the final review is going on right now. But this is kind of, you know, the web-based budgeting book that will be submitting to the GFOA for certification. And as you can see that we really don't need to produce any kind of three hundred pages, four hundred pages paper book. We'll submit the web version for certification rather than providing actual the paper book to this body. And it's definitely means in the past, producing budget book, it takes almost two, three months of labor intensive work for the budget department, but with initially just the, once the data implementation was done, it was very easy. This budget book was basically developed within two weeks by our team. Just to give this one another example about how are we using this software? Any questions? I can take it at this point.
Questions on the body, Ms. McBride, then Ms. English?
Yes. What type of communications went out regarding the timeline for submitting budgets and other requirements to the departments?
Yeah, so the initial communication was sent back in December of twenty twenty two prior to holidays.
Oh, it's big communications?
Through internal email as well as it was announced on the executive team call as well to all departments. And there were several communications sent out to the, all the department directors, elected officials, as well as the department head email list. So, yeah.
All up question? So we're working with the departments. What about other agencies? Will there be any type of communications going out to them? Because there has been some confusion before in terms of communications. Some of the nonprofit and private.
So that's on the grand side. So the, are you talking about the, the, basically the H tax, A tax?
I was just talking about the communications for the budget period because there was miscommunication given regarding people having not submitted grants and whatever. So I was looking at the whole budgetary process and how we are communicating effectively and where we will clear up some of the miscommunications from the past and help current council members understand everything that you hear is not true.
So the first announcement about all the H tax and A tax, when we opened the, the grand portal, it was done back in November. So we sent email list to all the previous recipient of the grants as well. Communicated to the council through the email that the hospitality tax and the accommodation tax has been, the process has been open. And if you would like to send it back to the constituent as well. So means we did multiple different way of communicating all the outside agencies, the community organizations, and not only multiple ways, but multiple times. So.
But that was for those that I had already received grants that went out.
Or applied, or applied.
Excuse me?
Or had applied to us, yeah.
Yeah. So that was just for those that were already in the system, right? Am I correct?
Yes, the email communication, but at the same.
Others would not know.
And, and as well as we did the social media communication, as well as it was announced on our county website as well. And yeah, the, through the, through PIO as well. So, so I, I, I believe that, you know, like we, we had used various different ways of communicating to the, to the organizations who had never applied before and also who, who were not in our database before.
Okay, so I understand part of it. Basically, I understand that those that have received grants definitely got a letter. Those that had never received any grants before was done through some type of PR.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Bondi, thank you so much. I just have a question just regarding the example that you gave us. Their normal expenses were five forty four and then their additional requests were pretty much double. Is there a way to tell if that's um, for one time expenditures or are those ongoing requests? Like if they're doing uh, software updates and things like that?
And I I think Mr. Brown would like to answer the question.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. So the way we actually address that, um, they can put information into the system, which they did, and then we talk about it during the budget meeting itself. So in this particular example, and we won't necessarily get into all the details, that's related to um, the increased amount of funding that they wanted to pay the voters, um, personnel who work there. Uh, if you remember, if you if you all remember that something that was done this past year. So that's something that they anticipate going forward, that new rate of pay is what they would anticipate. And they're counting the number of elections that would have to happen during the also during the cycle. In reference to the program maintenance, uh, the licensing and the upkeep on the machines, they do foresee that as being a recurring because those machines would continue to be taken care of. So in that particular example, uh, that's related to something that would be anticipated going forward. But keep in mind, in that particular example, some of those funds we give reimbursed back uh, because of the, you know, how they're operating. So, uh, but yes, ma'am, we do have a way of determining whether or not any requests that are coming before us through the budget process are one time request or reoccurring request. And we talk through all of that and we look at uh, what things that we can do to address that, either with the internal budget that they already have or if it is truly something that we think is going to require new dollars coming in as opposed to reallocated dollars or something else. So uh, good question. Yes, ma'am.
Vice Chair.
Thank you. Um, can you just explain access to this? Are you saying this is an internal staff thing? Are you expecting for us at some point to view this, or you just wanted to show us that this is a tool that staff is utilizing moving forward?
I think it's um, right now it's just internally by the staff, but I think we just wanted to showcase that to the council. Yeah.
Thank you. I appreciate the efforts in moving forward with advancing our technology for staff.
Sure.
Thank you.
Questions or comments? Thank you, uh, Mr. Despande, Mr. Brown.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. That's going to conclude the information I want to share with you on tonight. I appreciate the opportunity.
Are there any other questions for Mr. Brown regarding other items um, that he covered under the uh, County Administrator's Report? All right. Next item on the agenda is item twelve, which is the report of the Clerk of Council. Madam Clerk, you're recognized.
Thank you, Chairman Walker. I would like to remind the council and also um, everyone listening that tomorrow at three thirty P M, we have the capital planning work session scheduled. Uh, you guys have received the agendas. You have it in front of you in your dais, uh, the co- the paper copy and an email has been sent to you. I also would like to remind you that we have the coronavirus work session scheduled for Tuesday, the fourteen at two P M. Uh, you have also received all of that information. Um, if you are planning to, um, if you are not attending, please let me know. So we'll make sure um, to make note of that. And also you have received an indic- invitation from the Richland International Gala. This festival is taking place uh, March the fifteen. So um, I'm sorry, it's on March the twenty third and the festival will take place on April the first and the second. So if you're planning to attend, please let me know so we can make the proper arrangements. That concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Any questions or comments regarding uh, any items from the uh, Clerk's report? All right. Next item on the agenda is item thirteen, reported the chair and at this time the chair does not have any updates or announcements for the body. Item fourteen, just open, closed, public hearings. Item fourteen A, in ordinance establishing the offense of using, discharging, shooting, or igniting fireworks or similar explosives within unincorporated Richland County between certain hours to provide exceptions and to provide a penalty for each violation. That public hearing is now open. Madam Vice Chair, anyone sign up to speak?
No, Mr. Chair.
All right, that that public hearing is now closed. Next item on the agenda is item fifteen, approval of consent items, specifically item fifteen A, case number twenty two dash zero three eight, uh, M A, the applicant now named Drew Huddleston. This is a request to rezone our property or change his zoning designation rather from rural to general commercial. Location, Hardscrabble Road, T M S number R two zero three zero zero dash four zero dash one seven. Uh, I entertain a motion.
Second.
I move to properly second. Madam Clerk, take the vote, please.
Brenham?
Yes.
You?
Yes.
McBride?
Yes.
Livingston?
Yes.
Tereshia?
Yes.
Weaver?
Yes.
Baron?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Maki?
Yes.
English?
Yes.
Newton. Motion approved.
Mr. Chair.
Recognize Ms. uh, Newton?
Thank you. I move to approve consent items fifteen B through G. Could she say it again?
But B through G, Ms. Newton or B?
G like golf.
Got you. I'm looking at my
Second.
Page. Okay, let's move to properly second. Uh, Madam Clerk, take the vote, please.
Brenham?
Yes.
Pew?
Yes.
McBride?
Yes.
Livingston?
Yes.
Tereshia?
Yes.
Weaver?
Yes.
Baron?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Maki?
Yes.
English?
Yes.
Newton?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Oh, Mr. Brown, um, are you, do you know if any of these items need to be reconsidered?
Yes, sir. Item C through G.
All right. Entertain a motion for reconsideration for item C through G.
So move.
Oh, Mr. Chair.
All right. It's been moved to properly second. Um, any discussion? There being none. Um, Madam Clerk, take the vote.
Brenham?
Oh.
Pew?
Oh.
McBride? Livingston?
Oh.
Tereshia?
I know.
Weaver?
Oh.
Baron?
No.
Walker?
No.
Maki?
No.
English? Newton?
No.
Motion fails.
Next item on the agenda is item sixteen, it's the third reading items. Uh, item sixteen A, it's an ordinance establishing the offense of using, discharging, shooting, or igniting fireworks or similar explosives within unincorporated Richland County between certain hours to provide exceptions and to provide a penalty for each violation. I entertain a motion.
Chair.
You recognize Ms. Newton?
I move to add a line to item C five that's on page fifty six of the agenda. Specifically, um, we've discussed several times the fact that this ordinance prohibits people from shooting fireworks within a certain distance of schools. Um, as it's written right now, that would include peoples whose homes are within those distance. And so the language that I would request that we add is a line that says it's illegal to ignite or detonate fireworks within six hundred feet of a church, hospital, public school, adding the words other than a lawful property owner or resident that occupies property within the six hundred feet.
Second, Mr. Chair.
Properly second. All right, any discussion?
Mr. Chair.
You recognize, Mr. Asia?
Uh, thank you. So as I'm thinking through that, I I'm generally supportive of that and believe that if you own a home and it's next to a school and school's out for summer and it's the Fourth of July, you should be able to have fireworks at your home. Um, I I just want to find some assurance that it it that folks would be prohibited from setting off fireworks during, say, school hours or perhaps church hours. Is that, is that taken care of?
Mr. Chair. Recognize, uh, Mr. Wright.
Well, the ordinance itself says that you can, basically you can only do it, or it's prohibited from the hours of ten P M to seven A M anyway. So just like any other, I guess, home, technically it would be they, there is no um thing that wouldn't allow them to be able to do it during daylight hours, for example. Because it's from ten to seven, that's the restriction in the ordinance.
Just I to have a little bit of trouble with the the possibility of folks being able to pay, say, set off some fireworks on, I don't know, the first day of kindergarten or something.
Yeah.
Recognize Ms. Newton.
And and I understand that, but tech- technically they're allowed to do it now and it's not a rampant problem that we have in Richland County. I was just trying to specifically look out for the Fourth of July and those holidays to allow people to enjoy things at their homes.
Uh, Ms. McBride and Ms. Baron.
Um, with the, I could help?
Oh, go ahead.
Um, and does what's the first offense? What's the penalty or the first offense?
First offense, the penalty is five hundred dollars.
It's up to you.
So up to
Yeah, yeah, up to.
Up to five hundred dollars. Uh, second offense is up to seven hundred and fifty dollars. Third offense is up to, third offense or subsequent is up to one thousand dollars.
Well, I mean, I put as a, put it as a part of the ordinance. I would like to see um, a public education, an information campaign um, put in place to warn the citizens of Richland County of this new legislation because many people um, will have the fireworks going and are not aware of the um, legislation, the the ordinance. So um, I could get either, um, we don't have to put it as a part of it, but if um, administration would commit to at least doing a public information, education, awareness campaign.
That's something.
Yes, ma'am. With the change to something that would affect the citizens, I believe that would be appropriate.
Thank you, Ms. McBride, and you know, great suggestion. Uh, Ms. Baron, you recognized. You sure? Okay, all right.
Mr. Chair.
Uh, you recognize, Mr. Wright?
Uh, I would like to add that uh, the effective date, I think the recommended date would be uh, July first of twenty twenty three. So that would be the, I guess, the recommended effective date.
So that's pretty much the start of the new fiscal year. So that certainly gives us ample time to, uh, at least for Mr. Brown and his team to get the word out to the public. Right, Mr. Brown? I don't want to speak for you or your team.
No, that's correct, sir.
Okay. All right. Uh, Ms. Newton?
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. McBride, for raising that point. I just want to to say for the record that I totally support us regulating fireworks. During these hours, I'm one of the people whose family and pets are affected by this. I personally have some trouble with the up to five hundred dollars for the first offense that I've I've expressed previously. So that's why I'll be voting no, but I I support the idea of the ordinance. I just am troubled by that. So, thank you.
I'm it. I can ask Ms. McBride?
Who determines the amount up to five hundred? The magistrate has that determine?
Mr. Wright? Be the judge.
Right. Yeah, ultimately it would be uh, the judge because the ticket would be uh, up to that five hundred amount. But ultimately, yes, it would be the the judge.
I'm with Ms. Newton and and pretty steep. But it was up to, is there any medium that we could reach with that from a legal perspective?
From a legal perspective, you could do anything as far as that amount amount wise, but yeah, that's that's up to the the council.
Oh, for the first offense, I'm thinking, um, and I just haven't had a lot of time to deal with how the the amounts that would be appropriate. But I believe that five hundred dollars is a bit too much. And I know, Ms. Newton, you've been studying this for a while. Uh, Mr. Chair, I'm sorry. Um, could I address Ms. Newton?
Absolutely.
Okay. Um, Ms. Newton, do you, have you thought about an amount?
I this has been deliberated and discussed so many times by by this body. My my intent was really, I promised not not to derail the the conversation. I I don't know what a good number would be. I know that they're trying to balance the making it reasonable for somebody to go out to somebody's house. So for for me, I'm willing to I I don't have a good number, but I think five hundred is steep and I, but I do recognize that it's up to. And I just respect um, all the the good conversation that we've had here. So I I was not going to propose an an alternate to that.
All right, thank you. Um, then I do not have a motion on it, Mr. Chair.
Yeah, you recognize.
Thank you. I do not.
You do not? Okay. All right. Any additional discussion or questions? All right, uh, well, Madam Clerk, take the vote. And I believe, Ms. Newton, this vote includes the language that you have uh, added. I believe that's part of that paragraph, well subsection five, I believe C five, so includes that language. All right. Uh, Madam Clerk? Excuse me, Mr. Chair. I'm sorry, Mr. Wright?
Uh, and just so there's no confusion, uh, would your motion include the start date or effective date of July first?
Yes, sir.
Madam Clerk?
Brenham?
Yes.
Pew?
Yes.
McBride?
Yes.
Livingston?
Yes.
Tereshia?
Uh, yes.
Weaver?
Oh.
Baron?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Maki?
Yes.
English?
Yes.
Newton?
No.
Motion approved.
Chair. Recognize, Mr. Pew?
I want to privilege, sir. First of all, I want to thank my colleagues and all the discussion that we had and deliberation that we had behind this fireworks ordinance. Uh, it's near and dear to my heart because I was receiving phone calls as soon as I took office in twenty twenty about this exact problem here. I truly understand that we in South Carolina, we love our fireworks. And again, I want to stress, as I've done on several occasions, this is not a ploy to take away folks' fireworks. It's a ploy to make sure that our veterans and our animal lovers have a great quality of life. And so again, I want to take a great exhale and thank my colleagues for their support. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Council. And certainly I want to just acknowledge, um, uh, just the hard work that you put in. Uh, certainly you were making the calls to council members and uh, having those tough, you know, conversations. And also I want to thank uh, the D N S committee members as well, uh, because you all, you know, you you deliberated over this uh, for quite some time and uh, you just, you were very deliberative and you took your time. Uh, got before the full council and ultimately we were able to get it done. So again, this, I want to, you know, thank the D N S committee uh, under your leadership, uh, Councilman Pew. Next item on the agenda is item uh, sixteen B, uh, is authorizing the purchase of an existing mitigation bank to secure mitigation credits to support economic development projects and other matters related thereto. I entertain a motion.
Oh, Mr. Chair.
It's been a little deproperly second. Any discussion? There being none. Madam Clerk, take the vote.
Pew? I'm sorry, Brenham?
Yes.
Pew?
Yes.
McBride?
Yes.
Livingston?
Yes.
Tereshia?
Uh, yes.
Weaver?
Yes.
Baron?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Maki?
Yes.
English?
Yes.
Newton?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Item on the agenda is Okay, so move to properly second. Any discussion? There being none. Madam Clerk, take the vote. I'm sorry, um, be- before we take the vote, Ms. Baron?
Can we reconsider A and B?
That would be substitute motion. This is for Ms. Baron and and Mr. Livingston says he's okay with that. So I take that as a second. So, uh, Madam Clerk, take the vote.
Brenham? Pew?
Oh.
McBride?
No.
Livingston?
Tereshia? No.
Weaver?
No.
Baron?
No.
Walker?
No.
Maki? English?
No.
Newton?
No.
Motion fails.
Next item on the agenda is item seventeen, second reading items, seventeen A, authorizing the expansion of the boundaries of the I seventy seven corridor, regional industrial park. Jointly developed with Fairfield County to include certain property located in Richland County, the execution and delivery of a public infrastructure credit agreement to provide for public infrastructure credits to a company identified for the time being as project subtext and other related matters. I entertain a motion. Second, I move to properly second. Any discussion? There being none. Madam Clerk, take the vote.
Brenham?
Yes.
Pew?
Yes.
McBride?
Yes.
Livingston?
Yes.
Tereshia?
Oh.
Weaver?
Yes.
Uh, Baron?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Maki?
I'm recusing myself from this vote due to my parent company representing the company in question.
I'm recusing myself from this vote due to my parent company representing the company in question.
Thank you. English?
Yes.
Newton?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Next item on the agenda is item eighteen. That's the report of the Economic Development Committee, which would be given by the Honorable Paul Livingston. Mr. Livingston, you recognize, sir?
Yeah, item eighteen A, authorize the expansion of the boundaries of the I seventy-seven corridor Regional Industrial Park, jointly developed with Fairfield County to include certain property related to Richland County, the execution and delivery of a public infrastructure credit agreement to provide for a public infrastructure credit to company known to the county as Project Ritterka and other matters related thereof, and the recommendation from committees for approval for first reading.
Heard the recommendation of the committee, any discussion or questions? There being none, Madam Clerk, take the vote.
Brenham?
Yes.
Pew?
Yes.
McBride?
Yes.
Livingston?
Yes.
Teresa?
Yes.
Weaver?
Yes.
Walk, Darren?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Mackey?
Yes.
English?
Yes.
Newton?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Or, Mr. Livingston?
Yeah, item eighteen B, authorize expansion of boundaries of the I seventy-seven corridor Regional Industrial Park, jointly developed with Fairfield County to include certain property located in Richland County, execution and delivery of a public infrastructure credit to provide public infrastructure credits to a company currently identified as Project San Luco and other related matters. Committee's recommendation for approval.
Heard the recommendation of the committee, any discussion or questions? There being none, Madam Clerk, take the vote.
Brenham?
Yes.
Pew?
Yes.
McBride?
Yes.
Livingston?
Yes.
Teresa?
Yes.
Weaver?
Yes.
Darren?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Mackey?
I I'm recusing myself due to my parent company representing the company.
Thank you. English?
Yes.
Newton?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Mr.?
Yeah, item eighteen C and D are related, so I'll just ask you to kind of take both of those up together. The first one is item eighteen C, committed to negotiate a fee in lieu of acknowledging taxes and incentive agreement between Richland County, Project Echo, identifying the project. And D related to that is execution and delivery of a fee in lieu of acknowledging taxes incentive agreement bound between Richland County, South Carolina, Project Echo to provide for payment of fee in lieu of taxes, authorizing certain special source credits and other related matters. The committee did not have a recommendation, a recommendation for this particular item, but I'd like to move a motion for approval for items eighteen C and D.
So since there's no recommendation, you're making a motion, Mr. Livingston, does that need to be seconded?
Yeah.
All right, there second?
Thank you, sir.
Let's move to properly second, any discussion? You recognize, Ms. McBride? Yes, you, Ms. McBride.
This does. Have to come before. Does it have to come before the committee to vote on it or to vote on it for approval? Or just bring it before for the committee to decide if they want to vote on it? I need clarification.
Recognize, Ms. Brenham.
At this point, it's a part of the committee's report. No action was taken in the committee, so a council member can make a motion for the full council to take it up. So it doesn't have to go back to the committee, since no action was taken in the committee.
Oh, well, Mr. Chair.
You recognize, Ms. Brenham, go ahead.
So will the first vote just be to have the full council take it up? Is that the first vote? And then if they if they vote to take it up, then that will be a second vote, whether we approve it or not?
Yes, that's that's correct.
Great question, Ms. McBride. So as of right now, Mr. Wright, the motion that's been made by Mr. Wright, I mean, by Mr. Livingston and seconded by Councilman Pew, it's a vote for us to take it up right now, right? Okay, all right. Mr. Brenham, you recognize?
Thank you. Also, point of order, is the is the number of councilmen required to take it up? Is it a majority or is it is it three? I'm trying to remember the rules of procedure.
It's it's a majority.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Already properly seconded, so any additional discussion, Ms. Baron?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So are we, I know, I know that we're voting right now to take up the item. Will we also take it, should it pass? Should it pass, will we then vote on this item tonight?
Yes, there'll be two votes, the first, or possibly two votes. The first vote is whether you want to take it up at all or not. And then if you decide to take it up, then the second vote will be whether you want to actually to pass it.
If if I may, Mr. Chair, my my challenge here is that, and and I'll I'll be just as forthcoming about it. I I want to take it up. However, I was unable to attend the economic development meeting today. So if it was discussed in economic development, and I know that my, there are at least two other colleagues that did not attend that meeting as well. So we're we're somewhat at a disadvantage to be able to, I feel like, vote with all the information that's needed. So whereas I am in support of us taking this item up, I would, you know, just like to consider, have this body to consider, perhaps, if, should it pass for us to take up, take up this item, that perhaps we take it up at a later time, so that some of us can be brought up to date as to what it is we're voting on.
Mr. Chair. Mr. Wright, before you, I'm going to recognize Mr. Livingston.
All three members of the Economic Development Committee, was present at the meeting, decided to take it up at at the meeting. Everyone had an opportunity to participate if they wanted to. And keep in mind, this is a first reading item. There'll be many, several other times where folks respond and decide what they want to do this way, and so there's no need to hold it up.
Right.
Is it possible for the council to get more information on what this actually is?
Wright?
Yes, Mr. Chair. What there, and there are a couple of options. One, you could call for executive session for it to be discussed in executive session, for one. Two, I mean, it could be deferred for more information, or you can, or you can take it up. So those are basically the three options. You can either call for executive session, it's discussed in executive session. You can just take it up as is now and do a vote, or it can be deferred.
Answer question, Ms. Baron?
Thank you. And so if I may address this to the Chair of the Economic Development Committee, is this item a time-sensitive item? So if if I may, I I have no problem with the process of taking the first item up and, you know, voting on, voting on something by title only, but that's not what we're doing here. If we're voting on it by title only, I would feel a little bit more comfortable about it. But I I I feel right now, I'm asked, I'm being asked, and and I sincerely apologize for not being in the meeting, but we had two committee meetings going on at the same time. So it was indeed my intent to be in the meeting, so that we would not have to to delay anything and can keep, can keep things moving. So, you know, I I would, again, I want to support this, but I want to support it in the best conscious effort that makes sense for me as an individual. So as as a chair, Mr. Livingston, any any flexibility that you're willing to give, I would appreciate it. And and I understand I'm just one vote, but I like to be on the on the on the side of the team.
It was something that I mean, I have no problem if it's first reading by title only.
Oh, I think.
I guess not.
Well, this, let's just kind of.
Yeah, this is kind of pumped the brakes a little bit. I mean, well, we haven't had a vote yet. There's a motion that's been made, you know, for the body to take it up. We're not sure how that vote's going to go. You know, the vote, you know, it could, it could be a no vote, that that could be the majority. And so that kind of solves or swages any concerns that some of my colleagues may have. And if it is a yes vote for council to take it up, then at that point, someone can make a motion for deferral. But I think we at least need to just take care of step one first and then see what happens. And then, you know, from there, someone can make a motion, assuming that this, Mr. Livingston's motion, you know, if he were to prevail. So right now, the motion on the floor is for council to take this item up. It's been seconded. Do we have any further discussion on the motion that's currently on the floor? Sorry, is that you?
Chairman, so so what exactly are we voting on to approve this item?
No, what we're voting on right now is for council to actually consider the item.
Consider the item, okay.
And so if the vote, let's say if the vote, the majority is in the affirmative to consider it, then, okay, the next step is going to be for a motion to be, well, the council can then can take it up. And if someone wishes to make a motion to defer the item after that, then, you know, someone can make a motion. But we ain't got to that point yet.
Just some clarification. If 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 the motion to take it up fails, where does where does that put this item?
All right, so if the motion take it up fails, then, you know, at that point, I mean, it, it's, I would say it dies.
Exactly, it would die.
I mean, where where is it? It dies, but end up where, I mean?
Right.
Go back to a committee, I mean, just.
It it dies, it's, yeah, right. I mean, a committee could take it up subsequently again if it wanted to on another occasion, but at this point, it would die.
Let me say with this council right now, this is the case, we need to have a special call meeting tomorrow and change our rules. Because what this means is that no matter how important the economic development matter is, one council member can decide that that item doesn't come before your body. And that is, that is the issue to this county. If that's the case, we need, I urge the Chair to call a special call meeting, so we can take that matter up and change our rules.
Right.
Well, I don't know whether, Mr. Livingston, about one council member, because we had three council members on the committee.
Yes.
And two took, two did not vote to move it forward.
That's not the case, that's not true.
Well, yes, we did, we have two that did not vote on it to move forward. You had one person, and that was one, you know, the person that voted to the made the motion.
You had one person to vote for not to move forward.
No, no one, no, no one voted. It died for a lack of a vote. A lack of a second.
Brenham, it. You recognize?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Wright, would would you or any other attorney that's here on this matter be prepared to advise us in executive session if we were to vote for that?
I mean, I could, actually, you know, basically, use the documentation that's provided. And I guess the the committee members could kind of speak to it, but I don't have all the information here with me, to be honest. Rayceo and. Right, and Jeff, Jeff Rubel, the director, is actually present.
Okay. But right now, the motion that is before us is, you know, whether it's for the body to consider the item. So before we get into getting any advice from anybody, we need to vote on what is before us right now. I mean, if the vote could fail, if the vote fail, all this is moved. So right now, I'm calling for the question. Call, I've called for the question, Ms. McBride. Madam Clerk, take the vote.
Brenham?
Yes.
Pew?
Yes.
McBride?
No.
Livingston?
Yes.
Teresa?
No.
Weaver?
Yes.
Darren?
No.
Walker?
Yes.
Mackey?
I'm recusing myself due to my parent company representing the company.
English?
No.
Newton?
Yes.
Motion passes.
So the item is now before this body, so. Mr. Livingston's move for approval is there second?
Second.
It's removed to properly second, any discussion? Ms. McBride and then Ms. Baron? That's fine with Ms. Baron, then Ms. McBride.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I, what I, what I like to say is that I do want to address the fact that not one council member was trying to hold anything up. I merely was trying to get more information so that I could fully support the committee. And I want to be real clear about that. I want to be, I want to be clear that I was just trying to support this committee. And I think that it's only fair that if you're asking me to support something that did not have a recommendation from the committee, that I have the opportunity to hear what it is. And that's all I'm saying. And and I want economic development to take place in Richland County under the leadership of Paul Livingston. Let's just put it here, and then I wasn't trying to do anything besides to support that. And I want to continue to do that. But I think that in full transparency, we should have the information as to what we're voting on when there isn't a recommendation coming from the committee. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. McBride?
The Chair. I don't know, I know the general public that's out there probably don't know what the discussion is about. And I don't know if all council members know what the discussion is about. I will vote no, because I feel I'm obligated to look out for the young people that have been killed by various automatic weapons. I'm obligated to look out for adults. I'm obligated to look out for the community. And I have no issues with supporting a manufacturer that manufactures things that the military could use and things that law enforcement could use. But if certain things get in the hands of people that are irresponsible and could cause havoc on, not only havoc, but death, I've seen too many news, news articles, too many television shows, witnessed too many deaths. And in good conscience, I could not use the public funds to incentivize this type of program. Now, if we want to have a manufacturer making, that's fine, but not to use public funds. So I I have grave concerns about the directions that we are going in. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. McBride. Any additional questions, Ms. Teresa?
Just say that I'm here to echo Ms. McBride's comments. And I would like, as soon as possible, the public to be informed about what's going on, because I think they would have something, some strong words and thoughts and feelings to to share with us body about that. And I also say that tonight, we celebrated, this week, we just celebrated a manufacturer that is going to be bringing in a lot of positivity to Richland County and that there is plenty of of money in this other industry, and they don't need our extra dollars. Thank you.
Question, Ms. Baron?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. If I may direct this to Mr. Livingston. And that is, sir, you are opposed to us going in a brief executive session to get the headlines from Director Rubel, just so that so that we're clear as a as a body, what the what the. So I I'd like to make a substitute motion, can I do that at this time?
Ms. Baron, before you make that motion, let me give Mr. Weaver the floor. He's had his hand up for a while, and and then we'll circle back to you. If that's okay, Mr. Weaver?
Just very briefly, Mr. Chairman, I I'd just like to point out, I don't want to start this whole debate, it's getting late. But I will say this is a longtime manufacturer in Northeast Columbia. They've done a lot for our U.S. military. I think out of respect for everyone in the services and veterans, I I think we need to approve this, and that's how I'm going to vote.
You, Councilman Weaver. Ms. Baron?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'd like to make a substitute motion that we go into executive session to be briefed on this item before we vote.
Again.
Properly second, any discussion? There being none, Madam Clerk, take the vote, please.
Brenham?
Yes.
Pew?
Yes.
McBride.
Yes.
Livingston.
Yes.
Teresa.
No.
Weaver.
No.
Barron.
Yes.
Walker.
Yes.
Mackey.
I'm recusing.
English.
Yes.
Newton.
Yes.
Motion approved.
Right, we're in executive session. Entertain a motion.
Again.
It's been moved to properly second. It's a motion to come out of executive session. Any discussion? There'd be a none. Madam Clerk, take the vote, please.
Brenham.
Yes.
Q.
Yes.
McBride.
Yes.
Teresa.
Yes.
Livingston.
Yes.
Weaver.
Yes.
Barron.
Yes.
Walker.
Yes.
Mackey. English.
Yes.
Newton.
Yes.
Motion approved.
For the record, that was, uh, you know, council went into executive session with respect to item eighteen C and D on the agenda. That was pursuant to South Carolina Code thirty dash four dash seventy. It was a contractual matter. And we received legal advice and as well as information and no action was taken. All right. So back to items eighteen C and D. The original motion was a motion for approval. It had been seconded. We were in discussion. Mr. Wright, I guess as a point of order here, do we need, a clarification rather? Does the motion need to be, I guess, does Mr. Livingston need to remake the motion or make the motion again rather? Or do we just pick up where we left off?
I, I think that since the motion was made and specifically there, the secondary motion or substitute motion was made to go into executive session, you can go back into the original motion.
Oh, so motion doesn't need to be made again or can?
Right.
Should be, okay. Well, the original motion's back on the floor. And so we're in discussion. So any comments, questions? There'd be a none. Madam Clerk, take the vote.
Brenham.
Yes.
Q.
Yes.
McBride.
No.
Livingston.
Yes.
Teresa.
No.
Weaver.
Yes.
Barron.
Yes.
Walker.
Yes.
Mackey. English.
Yes.
Newton.
No.
Motion approved.
Next item on the agenda is item, I'm sorry, Mr. Livingston. There you go, thank you. Next item on the agenda is item nineteen, other items, nineteen A, a resolution to appoint and commission Ray Vaughn, Demeris Ray. You're recognized, Ms. Newton.
Mr. Chair, I move to approve items nineteen A through C.
Second. Properly second. Any discussion? There'd be a none. Madam Clerk, take the vote.
Brenham.
Yes.
Q.
Yes.
McBride.
Yes.
Livingston.
Yes.
Teresa.
Yes.
Weaver.
Yes.
Barron.
Yes.
Walker.
Yes.
Mackey.
Yes.
English.
Yes.
Newton.
Yes.
Motion approved.
Mr. Chair.
Recognize Ms. Newton.
I move to reconsider items nineteen B and C. Again.
Again.
Properly second. Any discussion? There'd be a none. Madam Clerk, take the vote.
Brenham.
No.
Q.
No.
McBride.
No.
Livingston.
No.
Teresa.
No.
Weaver.
No.
Barron.
No.
Walker.
No.
Mackey.
No.
English.
Oh.
Newton.
No.
Motion fails.
Next item on the agenda is item twenty, executive session. Mr. Wright, I'm assuming you have no additional items for executive session. That'd be correct.
That is correct.
Well, you know, I, I didn't want to be presumptuous, so. Next item on the agenda is item twenty-one, motion period, and I assume that there are no motions.
Move to adjourn.
All right, that's item twenty-two. Ms. Newton gave the preemptive motion to adjourn. It's their second. Moved to properly second, non-debatable. Madam Clerk, please take the vote.
Brenham.
Yes.
Q.
Yes.
McBride. Livingston.
Yes.
Teresa.
Yes.
Weaver.
Yes.
Barron.
Yes.
Walker.
Yes.
Mackey.
Yes.
English.
Yes.
Newton.
Yes.
Motion approved.
All right, we are adjourned.